He said he had, he usually have five hundred. It's like the right one. Today.
Yeah.
Yes.
She would be a law.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, or there's some. I don't know. No, they're like, I think, I think that they're hopefully so Amy to. They're going.
Yeah, I don't know what they're doing there here. Okay.
All right, Pam, so I think we've got six o'clock.
Yeah.
Let me know if I can do an audio check. Alrighty, good afternoon, folks. I'm Eduardo Valencia calling the planning commission, the December nineteenth, planning commission to order before we get going, and here's Amy, and we've got everyone here. We had a, we had a quorum, but thank you for coming in, just starting the meeting right now. Just wanted to make a, a statement that the sweater I'm wearing is not intended to be a fashion statement, I just happen to come straight from work on the ugly sweater day, and although I try to make time to go on change, I thought it would be probably more important to be here on time, so it's, it's not a fashion statement for those that may be online. We've got a variation of, of our meeting today. I just want to make sure that we've got, I'm gonna quickly go through the agenda, which is not what we've got on the sign, but it has been distributed. We're going to walk through a staff report by S H C. We're not gonna be entertaining questions along the way, otherwise we can get into a back and forth, so we would like to, if you've got questions, if you can hold them until the end, and they can be questions about the materials, not necessarily the opinions of whether or not what is being presented, you're in agreement with or not in agreement with, it is just to clarify any of the items that may come up. We're looking at about twenty to twenty-five minutes in that overview. The applicant would also like to do a presentation, having checked with them on their timeline, but hopefully can adhere to that kind of a timeline. We'll do a brief Q and A, try to get that to, once again, about the facts that are being represented, and necessarily the perspectives. We'll close the presentations, we'll open up a public hearing, just a reminder, and our attorney is present, and he can correct me if the protocol is incorrect, but just that we will have anybody that would like to provide a public statement about what the requests are and their feedback on it, would have to come to the mic, please, because that's the only way that we can actually record it. We wanna keep it to about a three to a five-minute statement, it doesn't really engage us into, from a power and commission perspective, into a back and forth, it's just a statement of what you may wanna share with the group. We'll close the public hearing, we'll enter into deliberation, and then we would hopefully be able to make a recommendation for the town board. My understanding is that that recommendation will then get considered at the next meeting, I don't think we have any special meeting in between now and then for action. So, again, just an overview on the agenda that, and then we'll adjourn, hopefully, right after that recommendation. Any questions from the planning commission members? And you are gonna be taking all the minutes for planning commission, and then we'll do those, the hearing from, from you. All right, with that, we just, we'll call out the S H C representative for the staff report on the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and to the members of the commission, members of the public. So I'm hoping my voice is gonna stay with me throughout the evening, so I apologize in advance if I cough as we go through this. So, the application before us this evening, we have essentially three items that we're looking at considering. So the first one, which is wholesome, has requested that the township acknowledge and affirm that they. So, for those of us, those of you who were with us last year, every year the applicant is required to. One year, essentially, so they are requesting consideration of that this evening as well. I would note, because sometimes we are also looking for recommendation or comment with respect to the Washington County conditional use permit, in the case of this evening, we are not taking that up. That is something that is actually in place and has been adopted, it is actually the county use permit, and it runs from 2020 through 2025. And so our job tonight is actually to look at the Anglo mining permit, and we'll talk a little bit about if the planning commission were to make a recommendation to approve the other two requests, number one and number two, how that would then get transmitted and delivered to Washington County for incorporation into their conditional use permit. See by the yellow dotted area on what would be your left-hand side or the west side of the, of this portion, that is the area that they are asking for non-conforming rights, which we will get into in just a moment. It's approximately eight acres, that area is separate from the discussion related to the variance, which is the second item we're taking a look at. The variance area is on the right-hand side or the east side of that northern reserves. It has the orange dotted area around it and its crosshatch, it is an approximately three-acre portion of property. This eleven acres is contained within the white parcel, the white parcel is approximately twenty-three acres, so just to give you an overview, that's what we're looking at. Request number one applies to the area in the yellow dots, request number two applies to the area in the red sort of hashed area on the right. So the first part of the application is the request to acknowledge non-conforming rights. Once again, this is for the western eight acres approximately of this area. As I stated, it's a bit unusual from the standpoint of we don't often see this as a formal application. Does make sense in this case because there has been quite a bit of history with respect to what the appropriate setback in that particular area might be. As a result, the applicant is looking for affirmation by both the town board and the planning commission that they do have the right to mine this area. So, that request was made as part of the submission, it is in the packet this evening. The request is essentially twofold in terms of the non-conforming rights, so the first one we, excuse me, that they would have the ability to mine and perform their extraction within the setback area to within five hundred feet of the residential structure located at ninety-two eighty, great cloud, Island Drive, County Road seventy-five. Resulting setback from the property line in this case would be eighty-seven feet. Of course, the required setback under the current ordinance is five hundred feet. The request this evening is to basically affirm the applicant's position that they believe they have legally non-conforming rights to be able to mine within that area, which we'll talk about in just a moment. The second is if they have those vested rights to conduct that mining operation, it's essentially under the ordinance that was in place at that time. At that time, it was ordinance number thirty-six, which we'll talk about in just a moment, but if those rights are vested, if it's determined and affirmed through this process, their argument is that they also then have the rights to stockpile, to berm, and to do other mining-related activities in that setback area. Ordinance number thirty-six permitted that, later revisions and updates did not. So, the argument is all tied back to that they vested their rights, for lack of a better way of saying it, under ordinance number thirty-six, which was back in the eighties and the nineties. By way of background, in terms of how we got to this position of them requesting this non-conforming rights affirmation, so in nineteen seventy-eight, the applicant or its predecessors purchased the portion of property known as the northern reserves. In eighty-five, the operator at the time shyly actually entered into a settlement agreement with the township at that time with respect to the mining operations. As part of that app that occurred in February, then later in December, the township adopted a revised ordinance, that ordinance was ordinance number thirty-six, which is the ordinance that we are under discussion with respect to the non-conforming rights. That included an official zoning map, which you can see a little vignette of on the screen. The official zoning map identified the area that was within the CE or the commercial excavation overlay district, and then there were specific standards with respect to how and where you could mine and what those setbacks were as a result of that revised ordinance in nineteen eighty-five. In nineteen ninety-two, the applicant or its predecessors entered into two private agreements, one private agreement being with the property owner that shares the property border on the northern side, which was ninety-two eighty. That private agreement established basically that they could mine within five hundred feet of the residential structure, but they could mine into any following setbacks, so as long as that five-hundred-foot residential structure setback was maintained. The second agreement was with ninety-three oh one, gray cloud, excuse me, that was less specific in terms of what could be mined, but it did also allow for encroachment within to any setback that was established as part of ordinance number thirty-six and any subsequent. So, that was the intent of those agreements, that's a little bit of the background and history as to how we got here and why they believe that they have the right then to extract within that boundary today. In terms of the analysis, we broke it out into each of those sections, so the first one being to mine within five hundred feet of the residential structure located at ninety-two eighty. There was, there were provisions in ordinance number thirty-six that essentially said, we have these setbacks, however, if you want to go into them, you have to establish a private agreement with the property owner. In this case, they did exercise that, that option within the ordinance and entered into an agreement. That agreement was executed by both parties, both the applicant and both, and the property owner at the time, which is not the current property owner, but at the time, and that agreement does follow through and transfers to any subsequent property owners. So, in this case, they executed that agreement, that agreement stated within five hundred feet of the residential structure, otherwise it was essentially up to the discretion of the applicant as to where that boundary would be located. So you can see here, this is the shared boundary that we're talking about, it's the northern side, it's the yellow boundary. That agreement essentially, one of the provisions of the code said it needed to be recorded at Washington County, in this case, it was recorded at Washington County. So in terms of the township's responsibility here, it's really to look at it and say, did they follow the code that was in place at the time? Did they do what they were supposed to do? In this case, they were, in order to mine closer and demonstrate that they intended to, they had to enter into a private agreement, and the private agreement had to be recorded at Washington County. Both of those conditions were met, so from the township's perspective, it appears that the ordinance was complied with at that time. So here's the section that comes directly from the private agreement that was executed in nineteen ninety-two. You can see that there was an exhibit that accompanied that language. The language, though, was very specific that, and I've underlined the red, excuse me, the portion in red, that identifies essentially the waiver of the setbacks, and what it says is, the grantor, or as close to the grantor's property as grantee in its sole discretion deemed safe, provided however that mining operations shall in no event A be conducted closer than five hundred feet from the grantor's residence, as depicted in the survey attached as exhibit one. In this case, the purpose of exhibit one is to identify the location of the house. If you match the house location on this survey with the aerial to date, it appears that the house has not moved or changed, and so in this case, that location remains consistent. With respect to the property at ninety-three oh one, they also entered into a private agreement with ninety-three oh one as part of that process, it was a little bit less specific in terms of an exhibit or a certificate of survey, it's also silent on the residential structure in this case. The other piece to note is that while it was entered into in nineteen ninety-two when ordinance number thirty-six was in place, the property was not within the CE overlay district, so that area that I pointed out that had the crosshatch on it did not extend onto this property. Per ordinance number thirty-six, that was a criteria in order to enter into one of these private agreements. So as a result, there's some question as to whether this agreement is entirely valid, if portions of it are, and to what extent it essentially grandfather's in those rights. Some of that has to do with questions between what would be the current private property owner and the applicant, but also from our perspective, once again, determining whether or not the agreement was made, which it was, it was recorded at Washington County, but then did it comply with the ordinance at the time, and do we have any evidence to suggest that the township was aware of that particular agreement? Did it in some way approve it as part of its process in the past? So those were essentially the things we had to look at to determine whether or not this private agreement has the same standing as the private agreement that exists for ninety-two eighty. So, as part of this, they are also asking that if those vested rights are established, meaning they demonstrated very clearly that they intended to mine within that particular setback, they followed the ordinance, they put those private agreements into place, essentially what that does is memorialize non-conforming rights within that area to mine or extract the product. As a result of that, their, their argument is that then we're playing by the rules of ordinance number thirty-six, and the berm, berms and other related but not extraction activities should be allowed to be located within those setback areas, because they were permitted as part of the ordinance number thirty-six requirements. The change to not allow berming and stockpiling and some of those activities, for example, occurred later after ordinance number thirty-six was repealed and updated. So the claim or the argument here is that they have the rights to those, to be able to do those activities within those setback areas because they vested their rights as of ordinance number thirty-six, or what was going on in the eighties and the nineties. So, again, what the applicant is looking for is for the township to affirm and confirm that they have the right to extract that, and it's by non-conforming rights. So, again, it relates to that western portion, which is the eight acres. Based on the available information and from a planning perspective, it does appear as if they do have non-conforming rights when it comes to the parcel or the area related to the western side, and that the agreement with ninety-three oh one, the parcel that is on the east, is less clear. And so, while the, the agreement at ninety-two eighty appears to follow all of the ordinance requirements that were in place at the time, the same cannot be said for the agreement that was made for the property at ninety-three oh one. However, it is clear that there was an agreement, so it does count, it's just to what extent does it, is it valid, essentially? So, staff has provided some findings within the staff report with respect to the non-conforming rights, but from a planning perspective, it does appear that they do have some of, some non-conforming rights with respect to that western portion, or at least that is our, our belief. So the second part of the request then is the variance from the setback on County Road seventy-five. This is a little bit more nuanced, but is also applicable to the last discussion we just had with, with respect to the non-conforming rights because of that property at ninety-three oh one and that private agreement that was made, and how much teeth or how valid it is in terms of enforcement and agreement. So, the variance that is requested this evening is actually from the road setback, so on that northern edge, which we'll get a map in just a moment, but the variance is to actually encroach and within two hundred feet, essentially the two-hundred-foot setback that exists south of this particular area. So the encroachment requested would be three hundred feet into the required five hundred setback that exists in our current ordinance. Once again, this goes back to a couple different questions with respect to how valid is the ninety-three oh one private agreement? Also, it comes to the question of, there have been several exhibits over the last several decades that have been submitted that shows the mining extraction area to within two hundred feet of that right-of-way that were approved, and so through the conditional use permit process. So as a result, we've got a couple, couple balls in the air that we have to look at in terms of what their rights are and how reasonable the request for the variance is. So once again, we're looking at this eastern half, it's the area that's in the yellow dots, it's an approximately three-point-seven acre parcel or area within that northern reserves. Once again, we had that private agreement, but the extent to which it's valid and complied with the ordinance is under some, some bit of question, and so we have to consider it, but it doesn't have the same standing as the agreement for ninety-two eighty. In terms of the review criteria, the ordinance establishes pretty specific variance criteria, which is consistent with state law. As a result, when we take a look at it, there's about seven different factors we have to look at, which we'll walk through briefly. In terms of the existing conditions, you can see once again that this area is proposed for extraction, at least parts of it are proposed for extraction through, as part of the twenty-twenty-five permit, administrative permit that follows this request, but essentially what we're looking at, let's see if I, I do, the variance is for, to be allowed to go extend essentially this berm area, head north, follow the same two-hundred-foot setback from County Road seventy-five, that's the request this evening. Excuse me, I watched through the setback request, their primary request is to encroach three hundred feet into the five-hundred-foot setback from the road. There are a couple additional pieces that have to be considered when we looked at the variance. So the second one is there is actually a requirement also to be setback from property that's not zoned within CE. So remember, we had the CE overlay district that was fully within essentially the area that was on the west side of County Road seventy-five, and then there is some area that's within that overlay district also on the east side, but it does not contain the subject parcel, it does not contain ninety-three oh one. And so we have to take into account that setback, and then there's also a provision for a setback from an occupied structure. The setback from that is also maintained at five hundred feet, in this case, they're proposing essentially a hundred-and-ninety-foot variance, so they would be as close as approximately three hundred feet to the house. Those are all estimates because we don't have a certificate of survey for that house, but that's in the ballpark of what's being requested. Graphically, you can see it here, so you can see the house that is at ninety-three oh one, the five-hundred-foot setback from the structure is this line here, and the five-hundred-foot setback from the road is here. So essentially, what we're looking at is the overall request from the roadway versus from the occupied structure versus from the property line, all right? So we've got a couple different factors that we're evaluating. So as I said, there are seven requirements or criteria essentially that we take a look at with respect to the variance. The first is, is what they're requesting reasonable, so it comes down to a reasonableness. The first is, is what they're requesting reasonable. So it comes down to a reasonableness evaluation. And from the perspective of staff, mining and extraction is obviously a reasonable use from the standpoint of the mining and extraction is there, and it is present, and they are currently removing product from that area. From our perspective, the reasonableness really relates more to the amount of the encroachment that's being proposed in this particular case, which I'll talk about in just a moment. The private agreement with 9301 is reported, but again, the extent of its applicability or validity are under a bit of question. And based on all the historical records that we could find, there was no analysis of the proximity of the occupied structure to the mining extent, so that mining boundary. So all the other analysis really had to do with from the road right-of-way or the property, but it did not talk about the occupied structure. And so from that perspective, because there is no analysis, as opposed to some ambiguity, staff believes that once again, that becomes the basis for a reasonableness evaluation. The mine has been, the phasing of the mine has been documented both through our administrative process, but then also through the five-year conditional use permit process. Just as clarification, the CUP maps have taken on a variety of different looks over the years, and the, the one that has the clearest documentation of the intent on the northern edge was the one about 10 years ago, which is this map here. There are, there is a current conditional use permit that does not show the future mining areas. It only shows for the five-year period, but it does not supersede or repeal and replace this map in terms of the intent of there being a mining area. And so we have to take that into consideration, although it's not, it's not the final say, but it is something that we have to consider when we're looking at, once again, the reasonable expectation that they may have had that they were going to be able to mine within this So remember, I mentioned the fact that no analysis from what I can tell has been done with respect to proximity or setback from the structure, the residential occupied structure. So we did go ahead and we did that. There are no other properties that we were able to find from an aerial analysis where the residential structure is closer than 500 feet from the mining extraction boundary. And so staff's recommendation is that while a variance may be reasonable in this particular case, that the 500-foot setback from a residential structure should be maintained. That setback is present in other areas around the mine, but in no case is a house closer than 500 feet. So our recommendation is that that should be respected, which would essentially allow for a variable setback based on where that house is sighted, and then how that 500-foot setback relates to the edge of the mine. But our, our recommendation is that needs to be maintained. And so the full variance area that's being requested would not be recommended for approval, but a modified boundary may be reasonable. So the second factor is, are there unique circumstances that were not created by the property owner? In this case, the unique circumstance is that we've got a limestone aggregate product that is certainly unique, that is not present everywhere, and it's also something that the region has identified as important to construction and development. The state has identified it, so has the Metropolitan Council. It makes its way onto several maps because the resource is not everywhere. And obviously, as everyone knows, it doesn't follow property lines. So from that perspective, it is unique, however, however large the particular area or deposit might be. Will the, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? This goes back to the analysis that the house needs to be at least setback, that 500-foot setback has to be maintained, and that's part of where that recommendation is coming from, to maintain basically what has been established through other means, including the private agreement with 9280, which did also require the 500-foot setback. Is it based on economic considerations alone? Obviously, there is an economic consideration that goes into this analysis, but it can't be the only basis for it. Once again, the county, the Met Council, the state, and the county have all identified this as an important resource to serve our region. And so from that perspective, while there are economic considerations, there is also an identified resource value to it. That certainly is above and beyond the economic consideration piece. Is it consistent with the goals and the policies of the comprehensive plan? Once again, the goals and the policies do talk about this resource, the fact that the mining operation is there and is likely to continue. It does also reference the fact that it needs to be compatible with rural, the rural residential uses that surround it. Once again, this, from staff's perspective validates that they need to maintain a 500-foot setback from the residential structure, but would be allowed to encroach within the setback from the road, but would have to maintain that 500 feet from the structure. Is it in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the development code? That is the zoning. Once again, this is where a little bit of the history comes in, since obviously the mining operation has been there since the 1950s. They have, over time, made modifications to their plans to comply with the performance standards that were, that are in the ordinance today, and have done so through the years. Obviously, in this case, they are asking for a variance from that standard, but generally speaking, they have followed many of those ordinance performance standards and requirements through the years. Is the proposed use of property allowed in the zoning district? The answer is yes. The overlay district is both present in the comprehensive plan and in the zoning map, and has been present for several years. Once again, just keep in mind that we're talking about the west side, not the east side in this particular case. So there are draft conditions and findings that are in the staff report. If the planning commission were to recommend approval of the variance this evening, it would be with the condition that they would have to modify the plan to show a 500-foot buffer and setback from the residential structure. So as it's drawn, would not be accepted. They would have to modify that to maintain the 500 feet from the residential structure. And then that would also need to be reflected in the operations plan for 2025. So it would have to be updated in both those places as a condition of any approval. Lastly, the mining permit. I'm not going to spend too much time on it because really the crux of the mining permit comes back to whether or not you affirm the non-conforming rights and also approve the variance or recommend approval of the variance. So the administrative permit essentially looks at extraction in these areas. The big, the, the, on the right-hand side, we attempted to do a little bit of a blob diagram. All of the areas except for this red area on the north, this north is the northern reserve area. All of the other areas are areas that extraction has occurred in the past to some degree, and were addressed within either the 2021, 2022, 2023, or 2020, 2024 administrative permits. So really, the crux of the administrative permit in terms of changes has to do with what ultimately is recommended for approval in the northern, sort of red, northern reserve area. So I'm going to scooch past this. There was some question, a request from the applicant with respect to the hours of operation. This is the same request that was made last year as part of the administrative permit process. Last year, the town board ultimately decided to not adjust the, the hours of operation, and instead requested that they follow, that the applicant followed the same process that they did the prior year, which was essentially they would have to ask permission if they wanted to adjust their hours of operation. That is the way that it is drafted, to be consistent with what the recommendation was last year. So essentially, this would not be incorporated. It would, it would refer to current hours, same process as last year to ask, once the season started. In terms of how this relates to the comprehensive, or not the comprehensive plan, excuse me, the five-year conditional use permit, if the non-conforming rights were affirmed and the variance were affirmed hypothetically, that would get passed to Washington County, who then has their own process of how it's addressed within the conditional use permit. So that permit is not the township's ordinance. It's not ours. It's not our permit. And so they followed their own process in terms of how to amend or update it. So it starts with us because the variance is something that is under the township's control to either grant or not grant, and as a result, we would then pass our decision on to Washington County, who would then take a look at the conditional use permit. Because once again, remember that the one that is in place today runs from 2020 through 2025. So that update does not need to be. About the application this evening approves, makes a recommendation, or does anything with respect to that EAW. The EAW is a separate process. We are in the middle of the public comment period of that EAW, and so residents have the right to submit comment letters to the EQB or through the appropriate channels with Washington County if you would like your comments documented. But the EAW is separate, and it is also a document and process that is being managed by Washington County. So I know that everybody is aware that, I think there's a, a public meeting or open house, if you will, that will occur for this EAW in Jan, I think it's January 9th. And so that is the appropriate time to learn about the EAW and the land that is on the east side of the road. So this is, and it is here. This, it's not to say that we don't want to hear from you with respect to it. It's just that your comments wouldn't actually get counted towards that public comment period. So really, that's not the subject of our meeting tonight. And then finally, there's been some comments or questions about the reclamation plans and how they all fit in with this. Just as a reminder, and I think I said this during last year's processes, well, the reclamation plans are conceptual. They are not approved. Any reclamation will be subject to the land use permit process, permit process, once the mine is complete and is not an approved plan. So it is part of the CUP. It's part of Washington County's requirements. It is not something that the township requires as part of its administrative permit. So just as, a little bit of clarity, because I've heard a couple of questions potentially about those reclamation plans, those are really conceptual, and they are tied to the conditional use permit. So I definitely went longer than 20 minutes, and I'm really sorry. There's, there's just a, there's so much. I try, people looked like they were interested. So, so anyway. So with that, Mr. Chair, I will turn it back to you, and then maybe the applicant will be shorter because I was really long.
Thank you, and thank you for the, for the presentation. It's a little weird to actually have a voice coming from behind and not make an eye contact and so on. Do any of the planning commission members have any questions about the, either the review or the very lengthy staff reports that have been filed and you've been able to review?
Well, I do, and it's, it's a, again, it's a question that I think is going to then carry over in our discussion. I'll try to be brief and hopefully ask the voice of the sky for the, or maybe our legal counsel for the, for their opinion on it. The way that, and after having read all the documentation, the way that, that I know that the evidence has, or the, the staff recommendation has been presented to be today is a little bit, to me, in sort of opposite logical order. A mine wants to mine into a region. They have a process to do so via a permit that they file with us every year. It is the 2025 permit. They file that, I forget the time, in November, but that included basically a request to mine or extend the mine to the north side, I'm going to call it. In order to do that, they're also saying that they've got non-conforming rights to a region, and they want a variance request of it. And that's the way I think of it. If they didn't want to mine it, they probably wouldn't have to get to the non-conforming rights and to the variance. At least that's my logic. It doesn't need to be right or wrong. And the question, again, for staff, for staff, just because of their expertise, relates to the, the administrative permit, which is a yearly permit that we grant, has to be in the, as far as I can derive, in alignment with the approved 2020, 2025 CUP. In other words, the administrative permit has to be, and it is on page six of the staff report, the, that it relates to the permit timeline, and I read, "The township administrative permit, which is what we're considering, is required to be consistent with the five-year CUP issued for the operations anticipated during the time period," which is a time period of 2020 to 2025, and is not. It is the 2025 map that I heard that is non-binding in the context of history, is, does not align with the extraction area that is being proposed, which requires a non-conforming agreement and a variance request approval. And here's the question. Is, is it, or is it not, does, does it or does it not, the administrative permit, is it not bound by this approved CUP with the county?
So Mr. Chair, I can start, and Dave can certainly chime in. So they do and are required to be consistent. So the administrative permit needs to be consistent with the conditional use permit. It is binding in terms of for that time period. The county has established within its ordinance a process by way of how an applicant, in this case wholesome, can amend that five-year period permit. And that ordinance by the county says that it has to come here first, because the variance, the request for the variance, and the request for the non-conforming lies with us. So if you, as a, as a planning commissioner, the town board, do not approve, if you don't affirm the request for non-conforming rights, and if you recommend denial of the variance, then it doesn't, it doesn't pass here, and therefore the conditional use permit remains valid exactly as it is. And then the administrative permit draft would be updated and modified to reflect your recommendation and your decision. So the county has laid out the process, and you need to take action first, because it, it, the county is not going to update the conditional use permit without you making the recommendation and the determination with respect to the non-conforming rights and the variance. So it, it starts here. So the answer is, it would then have to be brought into compliance. So if you, let's say, play the reverse, and you do recommend approval of the variance, and you affirm the rights hypothetically, that decision gets passed to Washington County, who then has its own process for updating the conditional use permit to match the administrative permit. At the end of the day, they, they will match, and they need to match, but it starts here because they're, a variance by its very nature is a variance from the standard, or variance from what has been approved.
I understand. Thank you for that response, and we won't get into the debate, but, but seems interesting that a permitting process, which is something that the town board controls, could actually impact and change a CUP process, which is a county element. Usually, the, the CUP gets filed with the county from the mining, not, and the county looks for, for our agreement. I find it very interesting that we would, through a permitting process, change a CUP, let's say, set of controls. So we, I'm, I'm not the expert. I understand that response, but I just wanted to call out, because I think it's really going to be important to our deliberation, the fact that, the way I think of this, the administrative- I think of this, the administrative permit, is what we normally would review. In order to mine into the area that, that they're proposing to mine, they would need a nonconformant agreement, and then they would need a variance request, but that is outside of the CUP extraction zone that we approved back in 2023, I believe. I'll deliberate later on on, on why it took so long to do that, because I think a little bit of the, the preview of my argument is that we've kind of been there, done that prior, that this is not the first time that the township has delivered or has been framed with a, with a similar request. So with that, are there any other questions for staff?
So my, some of the, some of the points that were brought up with, with setbacks and encroaching on, on structures or houses, existing homes, as, as the mine was going on in the southern portion, the homes that are down there, has there been any foundation damage with blasting and things like that as we encroach on the southern part? So that's a question that I have, as we move closer to existing homes on the northern part. I'm a longtime resident here, and the house, the homes in question on the southern part, the private drive, not a private drive, I apologize, the drive that goes down towards Russell's or Peterson's home down that area, from what I understand, in the past, there's been foundational issues with blasting. So my question is, you know, how safe is this as we encroach onto these foundations with the work that the mine continues to do? That is one question that I have as we get closer to that. Think really, the, the next question then is, was the, was the recommendation or the put forth that, you know, it's an important part of it, and sourcing it locally will cut down on the greenhouse gases? Has there been a study with the greenhouse gases with having to go further out versus staying locally? And then on top of that, are we sourcing our materials locally and keeping it here, or does that greenhouse gas just go out the window? I mean, is that really relevant, really? So those are two of my questions that I have with that. Another statement that I have regarding the 200-foot setback as we went, is it north, was that a mistake by aggregate of previous owners that, oops, we went a little further, closer to the road, and hey, slap our hand, we'll pay a little fine? Are they hoping that that previous, oops, or was it an oops? I'm a little fuzzy on that right now. Are they hoping to just continue that and just say, you know what, we, we paid our amends, we're just going to continue on with that 200-foot, and that's where the variance is coming in? So my question is, you know, how was that process, I guess, decided, or what, what do we have for recourse to say, you know, no, and I guess this is the process to say, you know, we're not going to do that again? So those are my concerns.
Thank you. I think, I think all three of those, I'm going to put them in the category of the deliberations that we could have after the presentations, and perhaps there are questions that you could ask the, the applicant. I, I don't think, unless, unless SHC thinks that they can comment on the technical nature of those questions, they're outside of the scope of the presentation. If, does anybody else have any questions about the content being presented, or, or the very thorough and detailed staff reports? All right, I'd like to transition to the mine presentation, or the applicant presentation, I should say. Thank you for your patience.
Patty Bessler with Wholesome, Regional Land and Environment Manager. I'm going to introduce the rest of the Wholesome staff that's here tonight. Mike Murphy is our Operations Manager. We have Kirsten Polly with us, she is a land use expert with Sunday Engineering, and then our legal counsel, Jake Steen with Larkin Hoffman, and I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten.
Good evening, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission, members of the audience. As Patty said, my name is Kirsten Polly. I'm a registered civil engineer and a registered geologist with Sunday Engineering. We're a consulting firm located in Bloomington, Minnesota, and I have been engaged by Wholesome to help them prepare the application materials that you'll be deliberating over tonight. So I would, I would like to give a, a little bit of a presentation on a few points that, that we'd like to make. My comments will be brief because your planner has done a very comprehensive staff report and presentation, so recognizing that, I will try to stick to a few points that we would like to, to make, and information that may be helpful and maybe address some of the questions that I've heard raised already. And then, of course, we are here to answer any questions that you may have as well. I would like to start by giving a little bit of background on the operation, since there are quite a few members of the public here tonight, and not everybody maybe has as much familiarity with the history of the site. But as Jennifer indicated, the site has been in operation since the 1950s. It was originally operated by the J.L. Shealy Company, and the quarry produces limestone, high-quality construction aggregates. The majority of those aggregates are transported by barge, and the remaining portion are hauled by truck on, on County Road 75. These aggregates that are produced are largely used in the manufacture of cement and asphalt mixes, and so the Larson Quarry supplies high-quality limestone aggregates to the Twin Cities metropolitan area. The majority of the land that was acquired for the purpose of mining was purchased in the early to, mid to late 70s, and the existing quarry and the northern reserves, as well as the property to the east of County Road 75, have been illustrated as future mining on land use plans, as well as on mining, operational, and reclamation plans for the past several decades. The land use planning by Metropolitan Council, Washington County, and the township have identified the area as a limestone resource, and the need to provide for the economic viability of the removal and processing of construction aggregates, recognizing that they're a unique and critical resource in our society, a society which consumes about 10 tons of aggregates per person per year. So a little bit about the actual work that's been done on that northern parcel. There has been environmental review conducted that included that northern parcel back in 2005. Jennifer mentioned that there's currently an environmental review process that's underway for the eastern reserves, but back in 2005, Washington County also conducted environmental review that included the north, northern parcel. And the environmental review analysis includes a very thorough analysis of potential environmental effects of a project or of mining. The analysis encompassed a variety of topics, including land use, cover types, fish and wildlife habitat, water resources, which includes surface waters and groundwater. It looks at water quality and water quantity, traffic, cultural resources, air emissions, dust, public infrastructure, noise, and blasting. The 2005 environmental review process was concluded in November of 2005, when Washington County adopted a resolution which included a finding that the project did not have the potential for significant environmental effects, and they issued what's called a negative declaration on the need for an environmental impact statement. And so with the conclusion of, of that process, it basically cleared the way to allow mining in that northern parcel. I believe that the Planning Commission is probably familiar with that 2005 environmental review, and we could certainly provide a copy of it if, if you would like to, you know, easy to see again. And I do want to point out that in that 2005 environmental assessment worksheet, there was a cultural resources investigation that was completed for the northern parcel, and there were findings of no cultural resources on that parcel. But subsequently, Wholesome did engage a consultant to do an additional cultural resources study, which was completed in 2024. And the work plan was developed in collaboration with the State Historical Preservation Office and the Prairie Island Indian Community, and the, the study included, let's see, 390 shovel tests on a grid pattern across the northern parcel. The extent of the investigation that was conducted, and I just present this because I know that there's been some question over, is there really a potential for cultural resources to exist on that site? And so the cultural resources study was then completed, it was submitted to the Prairie Island Indian Community for review, was also submitted to the State Historical Preservation Office, and they concurred with the, all of the results of those test pits were negative with respect to cultural resources, and SHIPOL concurred with the report concluding that there are no significant archaeological resources in the area that would be affected by mining the northern reserves. That report and the SHIPOL letter was included in the application materials, so you can review that, too. I think it's important to understand that not just all the legal reasons for the nonconforming use request, just to understand that Wholesome has taken very seriously the, the review of the potential environmental issues of mining into this northern parcel. The other item that I just wanted to touch briefly on was the hours of operation. In the application, Wholesome did request to have the same amended hours of operation that the township has granted the last two years. Jennifer mentioned that the approval was separate from the actual mining permit, the annual permit, it came at a later date. Wholesome's feeling is that it would be more beneficial to both the township and Wholesome if it could be, the hours, amended hours of operation could be included in the actual annual mining permit, so that there wasn't a confusion over what the hours were, what was approved, and the last two years that the, the hours of operation had been modified and approved by the town board under a separate action. And so for just clarity, we would request that the, the Planning Commission and the board actually consider putting those amended hours in the actual mining permit. The requested hours, it's understood that they are, it's, it's, they're being granted to allow the, the applicant to meet product demand during a very short construction season that we have in Minnesota, and there have been no noise complaints that haven't been addressed immediately by Wholesome during the two years when the, the township had issued those amended hours of operation. So Wholesome also understands that when they are granted amended hours of operation, that the town board still has the authority if they are, if they don't feel that Wholesome is responding to any complaints in an appropriate manner, that they can be rescinded, and that's completely understood by Wholesome as well. The, the amended hours of operation are included in the, in the applicant, but they basically include 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., or 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Also, the company would like to reserve the, the option of requesting extended haul hours as special circumstances occur. Sometimes there's a storm, sometimes there's an emergency, sometimes there's a project that is requiring additional hours, and so those are more of a case-by-case basis. The, the, I guess, last comment that I want to make, a couple of them regarding your comments on blasting. The company does have a blast monitoring plan. They monitor every blast with, I believe there's five seismographs. They have, in the last couple of years, they have been monitoring with seismographs historically for many years, but in the, just, I think, the, since 2022, have been submitting all of the reports to the town board. And there are, the, the current condition, I believe, says that they have to follow the state and federal guidance in terms of blast energy levels. All of those seismograph results are submitted to the township. Those standards, the state and federal standards have been developed on the basis of protecting structures, and so with mining, there's always a seismograph placed between the, the blast area and the nearest structure. That would be, that practice would be continued as mining advances into the north, and the, the standards that have been developed by the state and federal government regarding protecting of, protection of structures would be adhered to. As, as you mine and as you blast, every recorded seismograph reading is reviewed by the blasters, and they can adjust as mining gets closer and closer to a structure. They can adjust the, the amount of material that they're, they're blasting, they can do a different kind of delays to ensure that they're well below those standards that are protective of structures. One final comment regarding the 200-foot setback north of the town hall, that was allowed by ordinance at the time. According to the information I have, they were never, they didn't have a hand slapped or a fee slapped on them for mining north of the town hall and in, within 200 feet of the, the roadway. That was allowed by ordinance, is my understanding. So with that, I, I'm happy to answer any questions. Jake Steen from Larkin Hoffman would like to make a few brief comments as well, and we're also here to answer any questions that might come up from public comments as well. So, thank you.
Any questions, many members? I've got a really quick one. The hours of operation item, is, are they consistent with what they were granted this year?
Yeah, they're, they're the exact same as what was granted the last two years, and there's been no issue with them.
Copy.
Yeah, thank you.
Kirsten said 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. We, actually, in the, our applicant, we said 6:00, 6:00 to 10:00 Monday through Friday.
Thank you for that. Yeah.
I have a question, if I can, or if you want me to wait for the board level, or I'd be curious.
Does that relate to that, those comments?
Just, just after the diagram that she submitted, I guess, a question about.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had a, I had a question about, you guys have the 2006 amendment to the agreement that you guys have in question for us today, for the, for the 9280 property? And on the 2006 amendment, it refers to Exhibit 1, and my question is, when you have Figure 1 and Figure 2 here presented in front of us, do you feel those conform to even Exhibit 1 that you have presented in your document?
In terms of the property, this property survey?
When I look at Figure 1 on here, you guys have a, a yellow berm outlined?
Yes.
And Figure 2 is kind of more zoomed in?
Yes.
And when you, when you read your 2006 amendment in the document in question, that refers to a future public street, and on your document here, you guys don't have a future public street, you have a driveway and you have a berm. So I guess I'm struggling to understand how this would correlate to what the document you're trying to say is in question, I guess, if that makes sense. That document right there, yeah.
So the, that document there has a 20-foot driveway easement noted as well, and so this document, that's Figure 2, has a 20-foot relocated driveway easement as well as the berm, and then, and then it has the 500-foot setback.
That, that document right there says future public street, because part, part of this agreement to get to that township subdividing that property, 9280, is they needed road frontage to be able to subdivide it, so part of that, that, that property currently doesn't have enough road frontage to be a subdivided property, and that's why that's supposed to be a future public street. That's right in your guys' exhibit on your map, and it calls out specifically for future public street.
And, and the width of that is within the, it's still out, outside of the proposed mining boundary, so there's nothing that is shown on this map that would prevent a future public street?
I don't see it, yeah, that's where I'm struggling, I guess, I don't. I don't see a future public street on the drawings you guys are providing us.
Because we're not proposing one right now.
To clarify, I think the intent, from what I understand, is that in the future, when reclamation happens, the berm could be removed and that's enough adequate right-of-way road could be put. So it doesn't preclude the ability to do what's on this exhibit, but it's not proposed today.
Correct, yeah.
That's what, I guess that's what would lead me to that question, though, is that we as a township have, we have Jasper Lane that currently serves as a driveway that conforms to our ordinance for the road frontage we need to have a property. And if we were to entertain now a driveway, we would not have enough road frontage to have a legal property per our ordinances. I guess that's, that's just my question on it.
I think Jasper Lane is not a township road.
If I can jump in here, I think, I think the point is that the as is being proposed and perhaps the timeline associated with it, we may have additional concerns about the fact that the property would not have the, conforming with other ordinances and so on and ordinances enough of frontage as is. I think that it may be a future item, but not something that we, we would have a difficulty conform or aligning it with other so on and ordinances.
You chair commissioners, my name is Jacob Steen with Larkin Hoffman Law Firm. And my firm represents wholesome. I would just note, with respect to that easement, that is a conceptual drawing. It was intended to demonstrate a potential location of a future roadway, but that is not a platted future roadway. And it's not intended to be built. That easement includes several other rights and responsibilities, but the ones that are relevant today are the reduction of the 500-foot setback. I want to talk just a little bit about nonconforming rights. Under Minnesota law, anytime that a lawfully established use is created prior to the adoption of a subsequent ordinance that changes the rights of that use, that use becomes legally nonconforming. Sometimes we call it grandfathered, but legally nonconforming use is a very specific thing under Minnesota law. When you have a legally nonconforming use, you can continue to operate that use in perpetuity as long as you do not expand it. But expansion depends on the type of use. And mines under Minnesota law are treated differently. The Minnesota Supreme Court has held repeatedly that the doctrine of diminishing assets treats a mine separately where the nonconforming rights vest to the entire underlying deposit, the entire aggregate deposit underneath the continuously owned property. And that is because the, the use itself is the aggregate, is the future removal of the aggregate. So the day upon which you vest rights, you do not need to be mining the entirety of the property, but those vest rights to the entirety of the underlying deposit. And that's important here. So as we look at ordinance number 36, which was adopted in 1985, we look at the 500-foot setback. That 500-foot setback was established in that ordinance to create that setback from any adjacent properties unless we obtain, the mine obtained, a waiver. And that's exactly what we did through our predecessor, Shealy. We went to the Gannaways, we got a waiver, we got an easement, and that was recorded against the property in compliance with the township's ordinance at the time. At that moment, when it was recorded in compliance with the township's ordinance, it became a legally nonconforming right. Cannot take it away, and it is a mine, and we don't, do not need to be mining in that location. Now, why is that important? Because a nonconforming right is exactly that. It is a right. And in Minnesota and in this country, the governmental units cannot take away a right without just compensation. And it is our position that if the township were to deny this right, it would constitute a taking under Minnesota and federal law. So with that, we would ask that you recognize this right in accordance with our requests tonight. I do want to just touch on the consistency piece as well. We get that this is not approval of a variance and approval of recognition of nonconforming rights does not constitute a change of the five-year conditional use permit. We understand that we will need to reconcile those. But as staff has indicated, it is incumbent on the township to grant a variance or to recognize nonconforming rights to your own ordinances. The county cannot vary your ordinances, and likewise, you cannot vary theirs. So the township must take first action, and the county's own ordinance contemplates that you must first take action. There is a process by which the, we would go and take this administrative permit and reconcile it through the Planning Advisory Commission at the county after it's approved at the township. So it is incumbent on you to act first. We fully intend to work through that process with the county once it is approved here. Happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any planning commission questions for the, for the applicant?
Can I go back to the geologist's seismic graph question with encroaching on properties? Now, in the past, I want to say in the 80s and 90s, potentially maybe 2000s, I do understand and I know that a couple of the properties had damage. So I'm just curious, were the standards or were the beefed-up, I guess, watching or reporting resulting because of those potential issues? So my question is, if, if that was happening at the south end, what assurances at the north end do we get?
I can try to answer that question for you, but I was not involved with the site and I don't have the history of any, any reported damage to any structures. And maybe Patty can speak to that as she has more history with this site. In terms of why now there's beefed-up monitoring, I'm not sure exactly why that was put into place. Washington County as a whole has been requiring quarries to prepare in their most recent five-year permit reissuances, a blast monitoring plan. In the past, they've just requested information regarding the frequency of blasting and just some general information on blasting. Now they are requiring a more complete blast monitoring plan. So it may be that there's just more awareness or more desire to see the blasting results, see what the levels are that are being recorded, and make sure that they are under the standards that have been developed by the state and federal government.
And then secondly, with the encroachment to the north, as we're trying to get closer to the road and then houses that are on the other side of the road, is there perceived issues with blasting closer to a road? And I'll say, for instance, if we were to become the owner of a road, would that then become a financial burden on the township then? Does blasting damage roads if you get closer to them?
Not if you keep the blast, the energy level. So there's, there's two basic elements that are recorded in a seismograph. One is the ground vibrations, and that is the movement of soil particles as they travel from, it's the blast energy that typically is, the majority is going into breaking rocks. And then there's some that dissipates with distance from the actual blast. And there are, there's mathematical formulas to predict what it is, and then the seismograph readings to actually measure what the actual outcome is. And so, there, the blasting within 200 feet of a roadway is, is a common practice, which does not result in damage to a road. And so, if blasting levels are kept below the criteria that's established, there should be no damage to the road.
And would we have a cause for concern that blasting would go outside the requirements?
The blast seismograph results are submitted to the township, so you can see if they are or are not. You can see the last several years' worth of blast monitoring results to see where they fall with respect to the standards. And it's, as an, as an operator and as the third-party blaster, they're reviewing those results after each blast so that they know what their next blast, if they need to adjust something, if they're starting to approach a structure, they may start to adjust the number of holes that they're blasting each time or the amount of explosives in the overall blast. So that they're monitoring it on a constant basis to make sure that they don't exceed them.
Would that be it from the applicant? Or any other comments?
So just to address your question about, you know of hoses to the south that have had structural damage. Since my tenure with the company, which is 25 and a half years, I've not heard of any that have formally come across to us. I will say that when we moved closer to the town hall here, we reached out to the neighbors that are across from the town hall area here. Not to say all of them, but a majority of them gave us their consent that we hired a third-party engineering firm, American Engineering Test, and they monitored the infrastructure survey work, which is the specification of the responsible work, our resident into the serial. Here, so we would, of course, do that again if the residents would allow us to. So, but I'm not, I'm not aware of any formal complaints that have come to us about structural damage to homes.
I have a question I'd like to ask about, I know that one of the homeowners, Lynn, had a gap for well operation because of the blasting.
I can answer that. Our general manager worked with Lynn, and I don't know if that was conclusively determined that it was due to any blasting. And we've not received any other complaints about well issues. So I don't know if that was conclusive. I don't know that that had anything to do with blasting.
Then you also, one other thing, you said that you didn't reach out to everybody along with Lynn.
Yeah, everybody, I think this house on the corner at the time was vacant, and we couldn't get ahold of that homeowner. And we did provide those reports then to the homeowners at their request.
All right. If there are no other comments from the applicant, I'd like to transition in the agenda to the public hearing section of it. And I, and I know that legal counsel is right behind me, so please overrule any of the misleading guidance I may, may give on the public hearing instructions. But fundamentally, it's an opportunity for the community to give feedback on the, within the scope of the administrative permit and the information that you received today. Just to clarify again, this is not about the EAW process. There's a different time in which we're going to have that conversation. The way that we would like to handle this, make sure that folks can speak clearly into the microphone. We're going to try to make it like no more than three to five minutes on your comments, if that's okay. I know that we've taken about an hour and a half on our side, but, but perhaps we can keep them succinct. We, the intention is not really to engage in back and forth, but just make the statements that you may have about the application or about any of the information that you've seen or heard today. And with that, I'll just open it up to the public for that opportunity to provide input. David, any, any other guidelines? Go ahead.
Thanks.
I bring this down a bit. I'm Carla Big, I'm the Washington Township Commissioner. I just, I want to hear from all of you, but I just want to say, I don't think it was right that Jake just came up here and it just felt like it was, do this or we're going to sue you. I just want to say that. You have legitimate concerns. And I just didn't think that was cool, but I want to hear from, from you guys, so.
Can I go first because I'm working? Somebody can, I'll go.
Go right ahead.
All right.
And if you could identify for the record your name and address, that, that would be wonderful.
Sure. Lynn, UTEC 9963. I live right over here with the horses. Great Cloud Island Drive South. I've been writing out a bunch of stuff here. First of all, noise complaints. We pretty much quit doing it because nothing happens anyway. We hear nothing back. We hear nothing back from noise complaints. We hear nothing back from blasting complaints. We get nothing back. Okay? So we just quit doing it. Another thing, greenhouse gases. It's going to cure greenhouse gases. Do you know how many trucks come out of here every day? They used to barge primarily. They don't do that anymore. Do you really know the hundreds of trucks that come in and out of here every day? And that saving, that saving greenhouse gases? What happened to their barging? What, what happened to that? Because it's cheaper for them not to barge. They don't have to pay the trucks. The trucks come down here, the trucks take on all that burden. And so don't we, with the noise and the dust. Okay. As far as, let me hang on just a minute. The, I'm concerned about the well water. My well went down 21 feet a few years back. Nothing ever came of it. I was told that, I made the statement that I didn't want a new well. And I'm like, what do you mean? It's water, you have to have water. And it was a statement made by Tom saying that, I told him I didn't want a new well if mine did go out, because I have a shallow well. I'm down into the last six foot of my well. And that happened after they started blasting on this other side of this illegal berm they put up. That's when it happened. Okay? I also have cracks in my house that weren't there before this berm went up. And I've showed the mayor of Cottage Grove, I've showed Tom, there was some other guy I showed, too, that used to work here, but I guess you guys fired him. So yeah, there are things that have happened to my property. I don't know about anybody else's along here. Two are owned by Shealy and are wholesome anyway, so they can't complain, of course. They would get kicked out. So, okay, those, we got those going here. As far as the agreement between a private property owner and the mine, between them two saying, oh, you can mine closer to my house, that's illegal as hell. You, they didn't go through the township to get that finalized. It was between a private party and a company. That would be like me saying, okay, a private company came and asked me if they could put a five-story apartment building on my property. Oh yeah, that's cool, you can come do that. They totally went around the town board. They didn't, they didn't get that approved by the town board. It might be in your so-called abstract or your, your selling thing when, you know, the agreement when you sold the house, but it's totally illegal. How can, how can you say that? Let's see. The blast numbers. Has anybody ever seen the blast numbers? We ask and we ask and we ask.
I get them every month.
You get them every month?
Every month. Can't read them, get them.
Yeah, yeah, we don't know what they mean. They won't let us, they won't tell us what they mean. They give them to us, but they don't tell us what they mean. I've asked the people that put the blast things out, and they used to talk to me, they won't talk to me anymore. They must have got, you know, the people that are paying them must have told them, you know, don't keep saying anything to the property owners. So.
And then maybe if, one more comment? And then we've, we've got a lot of folks here.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's about it. Pardon me? I think that's about it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick reminder, name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Moore. I live at 9301 Great Cloud Island Drive. Property across County Route 75, subject to the variance request. I just want to comment that the agreement that was signed on my house, I've lived there for about 10 years. for about 10 years now, I only became aware of that agreement in 2020 when the mine was proposing their annual mining permit and submitted to the board for their information, not for their review, not for their opinion, that they were going to do this, that they were in every right to come as close to my house as they wanted to. I was shocked, of course, and I'm glad that things have worked out that it seems that I might have some protection as my agreement was never conforming to ordinance 36, and my setback is my protection. If they do allow some portions of the agreement to remain, a very key portion is the mine is not liable in any respect for any damage that's done to my property. So my setback is my protection. The ordinance that I think presides is 500 feet from my property line, not from my structure. We've seen damage to properties when it's happened, the closer they are, the more likelihood for damage. My property line is my protection. And so I just really want to impress upon the deciding people in the board to respect that and take that into consideration, because down the road, if there is damage, the mine could say that they don't have to lift a finger to help me. I also want to speak to one of the requirements for the variance, speaking to the uniqueness of the product. Limestone is ubiquitous in the southern metro area. It is. It just happens to be here. The limestone in that variance area is no different than anywhere else. It's gravel, you know? And so the tree cover that it provides, provides protection from straight-line winds, which predominantly blow west to east. I just put solar panels on the roof of my house. Increased dust and trucking is going to decrease the efficiency of my panels, and those winds and weather events are directly affected if they're allowed to deforest that area. So I think that's all I can say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you have to, the issue in front of you right now is...
Tom, if you could remind us of your name and address.
Tom Bell. I can't, I have a really bad hearing problem. The issue that is in front of you right now is not a new issue for Great Cloud Township. This exactly same situation was resolved years ago. And it's up to you. I'd like to give just a little history, if you'd allow that. Otherwise, we can just, okay. So, back in the early '70s, Don Sutterman, I am a member of the board, asked the J.L. Shealy Company, they were the original owners and operators of both the Nelson and Larson pits, what their long-range plan was. Well, Shealy put together a long-range plan, published it, and it involved excavating on the east side of 75, as is being proposed now. In accordance with their plans, they bought that property, but it was not zoned for excavation. There were enough citizens in the township that were really concerned about additional years of excavation and the matting of the, primarily the blasting and the hauling and all that stuff. Anyway, so this group decided to organize. They created an organization called Save Great Cloud. The SAVE was an acronym, Save a Valued Environment. And they were concerned enough so that quite a few things happened. Now, this did not happen over just a short period of time. This is actually a few years, if I recall. Mary Peake came out with a newsletter, which was called "The Eye of the Eye." There were people that went over to Washington County to research the tax records and to accumulate things. There was, I and Tom Peake put together a slideshow to one of John Denver's songs, and we're showing that to the Sierra Club and other groups. It turned out that the publicity for the, that was happening down here was not just picked up by the South Washington County Bulletin, but both St. Paul and Minneapolis papers. It was even, I was told once that somebody did a graduate thesis on the conflict that existed in the township, and it was a true conflict, because there were not just everybody opposed. And so the township elections took on a real tough meeting, because you had to, of the three supervisors, your side needed two of the votes. So the end result was that they had the petition to change the zoning, because the land on the east side of 75 was not zoned for excavation. And...
Tom, I need you to...
The hearing eventually came, and there was quite a few resources that had gone on this. There were people even beyond the township that had supplied money. But the hearing then for the rezoning did not even finish in one night. It continued to the second night. And eventually, the people that were opposed to it knew that they had to have good sound reasoning, or they would just be taken to court. So it was a big township affair. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick reminder, and I think that it's been mentioned three times, once again, this is not about the EAW process to mine the east side of the road, but about the 2025 administrative permit and the corresponding variance and nonconformant rights. Any other comments? All right. Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Tanya Hodge, 9301 Great Cloud Island Drive South. That was my husband earlier, my spouse. I just feel like I have to talk, and it's going to be really brief. It's just so, so hard to sit through these meetings again and again and again, and I've taken a break from this, and so I'm a layperson, you know, the legal stuff. But ultimately, it's my home, you know? And the trees are beautiful. I moved out here. My dogs can run free. The blasting, I have, as Lynn said, I have sent emails and CC'd Pam on them for the blasting. I work from home. You know, it's like my dogs and I are like, whoop, you know? There's those moments. And I mean, so when your whole house shakes, you know, you've got to think that there's got to be some damage, or it's just pretty frightening, to say the least. And so here's this property that my husband and I saved up for, and it's all, it's what we have, right? We're not a big company. I don't have a nice suit, and I don't speak that good. But ultimately, I just want to say that I would like to keep, like my husband said, please, the protection that we have as homeowners, as human beings, and true community members. I will go up and pick up garbage. Sorry, I want to plant trees. I want to keep the island an island. You know, when I talk to my students about how I live on an island, they're so amazed. And I think about my own children and my nieces and nephews that get to come here and enjoy the nature, and like when you look above at this island, it's devastating. Like it brings tears to my eyes, what the mine has done to this island at this point. So why can't, I mean, do you need this three acres and need to be 190 feet from my house? Is that really necessary? To me, it's not. To me, it's not. In my heart, it's not. And that's, I know this is very emotional, but I just want to say that that 500 feet is our protection. And the Hannah Agreement, I swear a lot, but I'm not going to now, is, the Hannah Agreement is atrocious. I don't know, disrespectful, despicable, gross, barf. I mean, it's pretty bad. And so unfortunate for us, right? Yeah, I know, we're the ones that signed the mortgage and everything. But you are here to help us. So please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I goofed up already once by, there we go.
Hello. My name is Mark Zakin. I live at 10700 Great Cloud Island Drive South, so I'm pretty far from all this, but wanting to use explosives within that close to somebody's house is insane. I mean, talking to their legal representatives, sir, how close do you live to dynamite going off on a regular basis? Because my assumption is that it's significantly more than 500 feet, and any blast mining within 500 feet of a property line is already too close? We have people in Cottage Grove saying their windows shake, and they're a mile away, more than that? And then wanting to say that you have an agreement that you get to mine within 190 feet of somebody's house? That's insane. I mean, I have been near explosions. If you are within 190 feet of an explosion, you can physically feel it. I don't care if there's a berm in the way. And if you want to mine that close to somebody's house, that's, I mean, that's just insane. I don't know why that agreement would possibly stand, and I don't think that there's any reason whatsoever to grant a variance to allow somebody to mine closer than 500 feet from a property line. You know, it's not my property, but this is my community. I'm thrilled to live here, and no, absolutely not. I can't think of a single reason, I can't think of an amount of money that you could pay me to allow somebody to mine closer than 500 feet to my property line, if that. So strongly no.
What was your last name?
Z, Z.A.I., page 10.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other statements? Go in once, trying to meet eye contact with everyone, just so I don't look down. All righty, that would then conclude the public hearing section of the agenda, which will lead to the discussion. And I would like to, once again, remind everybody that the discussion is for the planning commission to deliberate on what has been presented. We can engage on as much discussion, hopefully, according to Mr. Bell, hopefully, we won't be here until tomorrow, taking a testimony, while that one is closed, but not in deliberation. Would love to hear from everyone on perspectives. Once again, what we're trying to do is whether or not in, within the context of the administrative permit, what our position is on it, because the outcome of our deliberation is a recommendation, not a decision, a recommendation that would go to the town board for consideration. They sometimes love what we say, sometimes they don't. So that is the objective. The outcome is our recommendation for the town board, which they may adopt, they may modify, or they may reject. So I'd like to just kind of hear from everyone, if possible, and then we can see if we've got any alignment on a recommendation. Anybody?
I 100% do not recommend moving forward with granting a variance.
I also agree that we should not accept it.
Passing the microphone may be a little difficult. I don't know, does the audio pick it up?
Fine, just a quick...
Speak a little loud, that would be, is just to make sure that folks that may be remote or that recording is going to capture any of the comments. So you don't think that we should grant the variance? Okay? Any thoughts or any perspectives to support that?
Well, I don't, our ordinances now are different than, yes, they've been here since 1950, but it's 2024, and I don't think what happened back then should have happened today, so I just...
Okay.
I think we should have compassion for the environment, for our fellow neighbors. I've, at times, there have been blasts that sound like it's so close, and some people have said, well, you know, they hit certain veins. My house shakes. And I mean, I just, like the gentleman said, it's insane to have, if they want to do 500 feet from somebody's structure, I don't even think it should be 500 feet from the property line.
Yeah, and that is what our ordinance calls out right now, just for the record.
Could I just ask how far away you live? Like where's your...
I'm at 8898 Great Cloud South.
So... So headed into St. Paul Park, so the other, so you're way outside of 500?
Yeah.
I also can hear the blasts, and I have a few houses from Joan.
Any other?
Yeah, so as I've said in the past, so some of the questions that I have, I've already spoken to and hoping we can get some resolution on that, but I concur with the two other planning commission members. The environment is a little different than it was, you know, in 1950. Greenhouse gases, I was an environmental specialist working for a large company, and so I get all the EAWs, and I get everything that goes into all of this, but that doesn't take into consideration the people that live here. Yes, we can throw a bunch of shiny words on it and say, you know, it's not going to create this, it's not going to create that. There was one example about, you know, investment that was put into a house, and now we want to increase the dust, and we want to start blasting closer. So where does the diminish come from? It's going to come from the expansion of the mine on that property. So as stewards, I guess, of this township, the town board and then the planning commission, who is here to, I guess, here, take into consideration everything that's been brought to us, I'm still, you know, I don't like what's happening, and now we want to expand it. I just can't in conscience go for it. I feel that we need to protect the residents. We have an ordinance that says 500-foot setback. I mean, that to me is still way, is not enough. And there's all kinds of other things that go on. We want to include operation, you know, extending operation hours forever without coming to us. I think all of that needs to be redone. So I've asked a couple of questions. We all know what they are, I guess. So I basically, you know, I'm a no. I just cannot. I want to stick to the ordinance, and I appreciate all of the help that the staff did for us in researching this, so I applaud that. And that is really the information that I have to go off, really, because they're the experts. They cut to the chase for me. I read most of it, and I understand it, but what I do understand is that we are in charge, not the planning commission. The town board is in charge of this. We can recommend however we see fit, but it's going to go further, and it's going to be on the town board. But we are the stewards of this decision, and as a community. So I do applaud you guys for speaking up, and please make your voices heard and continue. There are three members on the board, and we have a new one, so make sure that those people understand that your concerns, you know, your concerns are valid, and I agree. And I live on the other end. I'm down at the, what do you call it, the second fill, I guess, if you will, 10800. And I live from home, and the amount of traffic that is requested to go between the mines is appalling sometimes, and so I'm totally against that, and that'll become another day. But the blasting, my pictures do shake. And I'm quite a ways away. And I'm not just speaking, because it's the cool thing to say, you know, blasting. No, it happens. And that's why I brought up the houses on the southern end. I do have, I have had some friends that live there, they're no longer there, they're sold to the relatives, but there are, what I was told, and I guess I shouldn't even speak on that, because there was words that... on that, because there was words that wasn't documented, but I do know that I had seen the damage on the foundation. And I do understand that they wholesome did come out and look at it, but really, I don't know the whole ins and outs of it. I do know that it happened, how it happened, I'm not sure, other than what they were saying. So really, those are just some of the things I have. But do keep speaking up, and make sure your voice is heard.
Mr. Chair? I wonder if we could take five. I need to use, I apologize, need to use the facilities, but I did want to have a brief conversation with the clerk about some of our record material. I wonder if we could take a five-minute recess?
We, absolutely. We'll just recess for about five minutes? Maybe Lynn, you can touch that heater again, because my feet are freezing, I don't know what you did. But we'll go, we'll reconvene at seven.
Thank you. And before we resume, we're going around the room giving feedback about the discussion items. I'd like to call on our attorney legal counsel, David, to give us some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. You know, one of the features of consideration of an application like this or any application is that Planning Commission and the Town Board are working within a statutory framework for the decisions they make. In other words, there's a statute, you know, law in the state of Minnesota that kind of guides and addresses your discretion and how you apply it. And to get to those results, you have to do what you've been doing tonight, which is to take input from the neighbors and the applicant to get their view on what the, what the application means for them and how that bears on the statutory standards. In other words, you take the facts, you apply them to the statutory standard, you work within that, and you come up with a result, pro, con, somewhere in between, based on the law that governs all of our discretion in considering these matters. With that said, it would probably be, it's hard to imagine a more complex undertaking for towns and, in some cases, cities than to deal with the complexities of mining applications and mining permits generally. They are obviously intensive operation, but they involve historical facts, weird aspects of law, public health, safety, and welfare issues like blasting and other such things. So, it's not like simply considering, you know, somebody's pole barn variance or something else. It's just a lot, you know, of setback variance for a house. It's just a lot more complex and involved. For that reason, there's been some exhaustive review of it by a planning staff and then submissions from residents and others. The long and short of that is, is that I think it would be unrealistic to expect that the Planning Commission could make a decision based upon, at least at this early stage of consideration. It sounds to me like your deliberations may be aided, pro, con, or somewhere in between, by identification of supplying answers to some questions that I made some notes of while you were speaking. One of those questions was, that appeared to me, would be to see if you can get a better bead on the implications for blasting in a reduced setback area. That answer may or may not be gettable for the township because it may require resort to some technical staffer, like a civil engineer, somebody that we don't necessarily have access, access to. But it's something that perhaps would inform your decision to allow you to generate a good product for the Town Board and for the residents and for the applicant. Number two, I think you may be benefited if we could weigh in a little bit more about some of the statements by the applicant about the law of, say, diminishing uses. If it were the case, you know, that every single parcel of land that somebody comes to own is necessarily mineable because it's adjacent, then they could potentially acquire piece after piece of land and continue the mining operations. That said, the Supreme Court has laid out some protections that are distinct for a mining use compared to other uses, like, say, a junkyard or a building or something like that. So, those are powerful and important principles of law that I think we need to maybe put in front of you with a little bit more clarity so that you can be comfortable in acting with that in mind. The other issue I think that I might suggest is that I'd ask you to also consider all of these questions within the context of the framework of the Planner's Report, which outlines the statutory standards. We might generally have a pro or con view, but it really has to be articulated in terms of how you feel it applies under those seven or eight statutory standards for a variance. And so, long story short, it'd be my suggestion to you that if it meets with the approval of the Chair and it meets with the approval of the Planning Commission, that maybe you think about returning to the subject matter in January with some of these questions answered and then some of your own thoughts focused on the statutory criteria that the planner and the applicant have laid out. That's not to say what result you could or should be reaching, but it is important that you work within that framework. And so, I'll, we'll obviously take direction from the Chair and the Planning Commission, but it'd be my suggestion that maybe, maybe a joint meeting between Planning Commission and Board as a workshop, if you will, in January might be helpful on all these questions.
Thank you. Good guidance, as always, although I do have to say once again, it's really weird to kind of have advice from behind. It feels like that is talking.
It's a Charlie Brown teacher.
We were, I appreciate that, that feedback and that input. And I'm going to make some comments when we get through the round that perhaps can, can align with it or not be in agreement. Because I do think that, let me, let me pause until we get to my turn, so.
I'm going to abstain from giving my personal opinion on the variance requests at the moment, and I'll explain why. I'm currently a sitting member of the Planning Commission, but I'm newly elected to the Board of Supervisors with my term beginning in January. So, I would be voting on this as a supervisor and to avoid crossing any lines or entering the gray area, I'm going to abstain from my opinion at this point.
Thank you. And that leads to me and sort of my, my take on it. Sorry if it's a little long-winded, but I'll try to be succinct and take the counsel recommendation or the suggestions into, into, into the comment. So, first of all, I really appreciate the process. I appreciate the process that we've got, we've got a new board member coming in, one exiting and a couple of them that are probably checking out the video, that allows us with complex issues that come in front of us. This is not a dog tag. This is a complex situation to really invoke assistance. And I appreciate staff and SHC for doing wonderful work. We may not necessarily agree with some of the outcomes of it, but I think it is based in expertise, and that is really what we need in order to be able to have these kind of deliberations. We may not understand every single thing it says, but at least we've been through the process to seek out expertise in order to inform ourselves and then, and then make decisions. So, I just, just wanted to put that out for the record. I do want to, my own opinion of it goes back to the kind of the logic that I laid out earlier, and it may be inconsistent with a perfect sequence of things, but I look at this as a administrative permit process that requires, in order for that administrative permit to be granted, to have at least a non-conforming use validated and also a variance validated. In order to do that, we would need to, in my opinion, and perhaps that's something that can change, a CUP that, that granted that zone to be mined, which we don't. That's point number one. And the second one is, I think that we've kind of seen this movie before. So, this has been, I don't want to say litigated because that's not technical, but the question of both setbacks and distances and a, the claim from the applicant legal counsel on the non-conforming sort of assurance has been talked through in detail for the last three years, right? It's actually what delayed the CUP. The CUP usually goes for five years. It took three years to get to that CUP because we went back and forth in which both the mine came in front of this board and then the, the Town Board to ask for a variance. Now, all of a sudden, it's a right, but a year and a half ago, they asked for a variance in order to do the exact same thing. So, somewhere along the way, they were thinking they didn't have a right, and all of a sudden, they have a right. And along the way actually came a withdrawal of that variance. So, we've seen the movie before in our, in our positions. We have consulted with counsel on the merits, the legal merits that bind that decision-making process. And I don't see anything, even with, notwithstanding the, the staff report, I don't see anything that in my qualification, without really consulting with our own legal counsel, would make us overturn those decisions that were made before. They've been, they've been greatly discussed, greatly litigated, I want to say, and although it's not, not in the courts. And they, the decision was to not grant the variances, which now we hear the applicant thinking that is a right, is not, not even something that they have to request. All of that within the context of a mining permit that's within a CUP that doesn't allow it. So, for that, those reasons, I would, I feel that the, that we don't have any, or at least I don't see any, anything new in front of me that would make me have to be opposed or inconsistent with what the township has, the declarations that the township has made before. There's one last point that I want to make, which is I know staff went through the seven criteria associated with the variance request, and I think that this was applicable to both variant requests that we had before, for the both properties, when, when the mine thought they actually had to ask instead of just remind us that they, that it's theirs, right? And there's seven criteria. There's one of one that is, that is perhaps the softest one on that, on the staff report associated with, is this an economic profit issue only? I'm probably not articulating that very well. Is the variance based on economic principles only, otherwise, or, or in lemon terms, because of money, right? And the argument, I think in our, in our own rejection of the variance request, we said no twice. The staff report now says, kind of maybe. I can kind of see it. That's, it's not precise language, but that's where it's at. And I, and I thought about that and, and the argument is made about the, I'm going to say, the benefit of the community and where perhaps the Met Council is at with this issue and so on. And I'm thinking to myself, the community is really going to care about a subset of acres and one little mine within all the other mines that are in the Twin Cities to really make ends meet? Like, for real? Like, that, those little sections, no matter how deep you go into them and whatever quality they've got, that's going to save the community? And I, I beg to differ. I think it's, I think it's a, it's almost insulting. It's a, it's a silly proposition that, yeah, I said within the lines of, but at the same time, the community wants to avoid pollution and pollution is going to be facilitated by this activity and, and probably the community could benefit from many other things that I don't think a variance, granting a variance is going to facilitate and therefore that would make that, that guideline or that, that, that check be of economic interest alone. So, just wanted to put it against that framework, at least from my opinion of it. I recognize that that's inconsistent with the staff record, but it is probably not the same language, but consistent with the variance rejection that we've done in the past. Those were my comments. I think our legal counsel said, do we have an opportunity to perhaps not make a recommendation? I feel, with all due respect, I disagree with that. I think we're, I certainly feel informed to make a recommendation for the board on rejecting the, the planning, the administrative permit, planning and related non-conforming request and variance request. I would encourage the board to have a meeting or subsequent meeting to, to validate any of the data points, either the blasting impact. I'm not entirely sure what, what kind of experts we can bring in order to really fully understand what the impact would be. Sounds to me like anything that is boom, boom, right next to your home is probably not good, good. So, how, how we, how we determine exactly what that is doesn't seem, I don't know if it's going to be feasible. Clarity on the application? We're not experts on this, so I don't know if we're going to draw a lot more clarity. I think staff did a wonderful job of explaining it in a way that I understand it, but, but I don't know if between us and three more meetings, we're going to really be able to get more clear. And then satisfaction of the standards, I just said, the one that I would really logically then, or, or push back on related to the solely economic gain and not necessarily saving the, the community interest. So, I'm ready to actually make a recommendation that we do not support the applicant requests and the non-conforming and variance requests to the, to the full-time board and open ourselves up to any further discussion that the board should want to have with the Planning Commission to the matter.
So, from what I understand, staff has, staff, staff believes that they have the non-conforming rights and they can go into the little section. The second part of the, then, is the variance. Can we go within the 500-foot setback? From what I understand, there's two parts here that we're recommending? Or is it just the one?
Yeah, maybe we can get clarity from, from staff, but the, the applicant in my, from the way that I would describe it, is asking, first of all, for a mining permit for next year. And in order to do that, they need to make sure that the non-conforming rights are granted, i.e., that's mineable and I can and I don't have to conform with, I don't have to be within a setback, which, as I said, that's been inconsistent with their record. They have asked prior. We've denied it. And right now, they're making the claim, sort of aggressive claim of, this is something that we're entitled to. And on the other property, they would need a variance request, and they're requesting that variance, which is what staff put against these seven measures, if you would, or, or tests that we have to do to conform with, with any variance request according to statute. So, unless we want to have any additional discussion, I would like to make a motion to suggest to the Town Board that we reject the 2025 administrative permit and related non-conforming rights use and variance request.
I'll second that.
Right, any discussion? I know we have an abstention, so I'm, I got to honor that, but in all of you, or all of those that would be in agreement indicates, so by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Any abstained? Outrighty. That would conclude the recommendation for the, for the Town Board. I do have a question, if I may, either for legal counsel or for staff, on timelines. I just want to make sure that we're crystal on the timelines, that we have to be abiding by. I think there's certain clocks that start when the applications get filed and there's certain extensions that can happen at certain times. I just want to be clear that we're not going to be running into any of those timelines or if there's any action that we have to make in order to extend them, that we're, we're taking that down and following through.
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, an extension letter indicating that we will take an additional 60 days to the initial 60-day review period will be sent out tomorrow. We would be very close, but given the holiday schedule, we would be at, I believe, 64 days or something like that when the Town Board would actually take it up. So, we have the right to send that extension letter with when we believe a decision will be made. That will be sent out tomorrow. There is no action that is required by you in order to send that letter. That is something that we as a township have the ability to do, provided we have documented reasons for the extension of that review period.
Add it. And are we comfortable, Pam, in drafting that letter? Do you, do we need any, or is that something staff can help with, help draft? Do you already have it?
Jennifer will be writing.
Jennifer, Jennifer, thank you. Outrighty. Does anybody else have any other comments or questions? If not, I am going to be adjourning the meeting. All right, meeting's adjourned.